Thank you, Father, for this day and your many blessings. We ask that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge here tonight to do the city business. We ask you to bless the first responders, our military that is protecting us each and every day. We ask all these things in Jesus's name and for His sake. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order and do it with a roll call. Patrick Bennett is on the phone. Patrick, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Magui.
Here.
Mr. Brown is absent tonight. I have Timmy McCaffrey on the phone.
Timmy.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Here.
And Mr. Parker.
Present.
Okay, so we have a, we do have a quorum for a meeting. So the first thing we have here up is a public hearing for 24 Pecan Drive Assessed to TTLBL LLC.
The Mayor and Board of Alderman at a regular meeting duly held on September 5th, 2023, did cause to be sent via certified mail electronic receipt requested notice of hearing to TTLBL LLC at 4747 Executive Drive Suite 510 in San Diego, California, as the same appears to record on the Harrison County 2022 official real property tax rolls. The notice of hearing was posted on the subject property of 24 Pecan Drive in Mississippi, in Long Beach, Mississippi, on September 7th, 2023 by the zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner, the bulletin boards at City Hall, the Water Department, and the Building Office at 201 Jeff Davis Avenue, and at the Long Beach Public Library, 209 Jeff Davis Avenue.
All right. Can I get a motion to spread the report?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Those pictures were taken of the subject property today.
So I have some pictures. I'll split them up just so you guys can see. If you'll pass that to Pete. While they're looking, is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the, I'm sorry, TTLBL LLC? Okay. Hearing none. Okay. Good. Here you want these.
I don't need to see anymore.
You're good. Okay.
Whole lot worse than this.
Good. Thank you. All right. So with nobody here, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right. So it's the pleasure of the board. What would you guys like to do if you find it? I'm open to motions, please. Whether we want a motion to adjudicate and send Public Works in there to clean it up, put it in Mike's hands. How would you guys like to handle it?
Is this in, is this in Ward 5 or 6? Where is it?
In Mikey's Ward.
In Mike's.
5, okay.
I'll follow anybody's lead here, please.
I want to make a motion. Will you adjudicate?
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we're good there. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong minutes. I'm looking at the wrong minutes. Apologize. Okay. Announcements, presentations, and proclamations.
I would like to say one thing. I'd like to say thank you to the police department and to Courtney for all that y'all did on Monday or yesterday for the cruise in the coast. I saw Courtney out everywhere. And if I'm missing anybody, I know all of our city employees were involved, but thank you all very much for all your efforts in making sure all of our visitors and our residents stayed safe and had a very good time. It was a very nice parade.
Include Bob Paul in that.
Yep.
Yes, I knew I forgot.
And Public Works and Joe's guys.
Just don't want to be overlooked, Bob.
Okay. Angie, jumping in early today. No, you're good. You're good. Amendments to the municipal docket. I think, Patrick, you may have something? I'm not sure if he can hear me.
Yeah, the issue with the ditch, no.
Coal Motors.
For coal's prop, coal's motor.
Okay. I have a motion to add that. Have a second.
Second.
Sorry, can you repeat that because I didn't quite understand.
The ditch behind, uh, coal motors.
Ditch behind, okay.
Okay. And that will be under new business number 11.
Is that all?
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Do I need to take a vote on that?
Patrick made a motion.
Yep. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Approved minutes.
So move.
Second.
September 19th, regular and September 19th executive session. I have a motion and a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Planning and Development, September 28th, regular.
Do I need to recuse myself?
Because you're on the docket, yes, ma'am. Please make a note that Angie has recused herself due to the, she has something on there. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
With discussion?
I thought you had some discussion.
I do have some discussion, but I didn't want to step on you.
No, I'm waiting on you.
Okay, I have a couple of things. First, I think we need to pull out the, or table the item for, is it Laura Brayton at 405 South Cleveland. In reading the documents, there is a, there's, the wrong insurance to begin with is it's a homeowner's policy, not a rental policy. And then the VRBO liability policy that was in there expired in May of 2023. So that was the first one that I think we need to pull out and just table it. If she brings in the correct insurance, I don't have a problem with it. And then the second one was Tamara's, is it Stoffel? And was just a question. That was at 1, I'm sorry, 205 South Cleveland. I thought there was something in our ordinance about the manager living or being within 10 minutes if there was a call. Isn't, am I correct on that, Mike?
There is a distance.
Okay, so I was reading in there and it looks like the property manager is in Wiggins. So I'd like to table that one, not necessarily decline it, but table that one as well for clarification if we can look into that.
So move.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Angie? Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, moving on. Approved docket of claims number 100323.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Excuse me. There's nothing under unfinished business, under new business. We have a special event app and waiver, fee waiver request from Pink Heart Funds, Pink Out the Park.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one is special event application and fee waiver for First Baptist Church, trunk or treat.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I believe, this is an annual event that they do, and I think it's great. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Banner placement request, First Baptist Church, trunk or treat.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on through. All right. Scheduled work session for the Gateway Project. What you got there, Keeney?
So Christian Price would like to schedule a time with y'all to go over the design status of the Gateway Project. His thoughts are either October 24th or 25th. I don't think we could do the 25th because they have court in here at 4:00, but Tuesday, the 24th is, is open in this room. If y'all would like to schedule that.
It'll be 5:00.
I have an issue with it.
Okay.
All right, 5:00 PM on October 24th.
Will that be the only thing discussed that night?
Yes.
What do we already have scheduled?
We have one on October 10th.
What's the topic?
To talk about short-term rentals.
Yeah, which is, next Tuesday is the work session for short-term rentals. And we can discuss that on down. Now, I know there's items out there that you're wanting to have a work session on. What is the procedure on adding items to an existing work session?
Just take a motion to add those.
Okay. So take a motion. So if you want to, we have one meeting between now and that. If you want to, unless you have a list of your items tonight that you would like to add to the 24th?
To the 24th, can we add any to next week's or not?
Do we have enough?
We have enough time.
We have enough time?
We have enough time. Now, all we're gonna do is talk about, well, that's gonna be a big topic.
That's gonna be, and that's why I was recommending the 24th.
I'd like to discuss the library and just city property on the 24th, adding that.
City property. Okay.
Okay, so is your motion to schedule the 24th and add?
That's our motion.
That's our motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so adding a topic to the 24th. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So that's the 24th. Got it. Thank you. Moving on. Commercial lease of Harbor Pier 6, Mr. Kim Fulton. Keith Fulton, I'm sorry. I apologize. Is Keith here? Okay. So I don't know if any of y'all want to discuss this. I don't know. I'm just gonna say.
I would like to hear from him.
I would like to hear from him, but with the, with us working with FEMA on that appeal, I don't know that we can.
Right.
Mr. Simpson, do you, do you know if that would, I think that might be under Hunter and those guys about leasing out that one pier there?
Don't know what the, our.
I think it's a very gray area.
I need to go back and look at the FEMA regulations with, with Griffin.
Yeah, unfortunately, he's not here tonight.
See if this would infringe on any of the obligations of FEMA.
And, and I just don't want to jeopardize anything.
Table case application till, till next meeting. I can take a look at that.
Okay.
And I would have two comments. First of all, his application says he's gonna personally address the board. He's obviously not here to do so. Secondly, maybe consider, a little bit fearful of someone else coming and saying we want to lease as well. And I think we're gonna get ourselves into a bind without counsel or Griff or somebody giving us the okay to do so.
Yeah, I think, I think you're, I think you're right. There's a lot of questions, and I think maybe we just table it until the next one and see about getting some more answers within Griffin.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right. Admin adjustment, Long Beach Rentals LLC, Klondike Commission Right Away Purchase. Have y'all all been able to look at this?
That's all part of our work at Commission and Klondike, right?
Yes.
Taking down the canopy, striping.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be.
I'll make a motion.
Aesthetic improvement.
Okay. So I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. All right. All right. Sorry. Did I mess that up? Okay. Number eight, discussion short.
37.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Number seven, request to add emblems to the city sign, American Legion post 1995. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. How are y'all doing?
Good. Real quick before you start, I did pass out. Each one of y'all have some pictures that they brought on what they're looking to do. So, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. What we're looking at is, we have no signs coming into the city that lets people know that we're even here. And we've, we've got signs for Kulanis Rotary Club and stuff at 28th and Beet Line, but I've been down on 90, and we have nothing down there to direct people up here to even know we're here, to serve them. It makes getting new members in here a little more difficult. So what we'd like to do is, option one would be the optimum. And I attached a picture of the sign down on 90 and Jeff Davis to where we could possibly place this sign on one of the posts so they can see it coming down 90 and direct them this way. This sign provides the time that we meet, the day of the month, and the address.
I think as long as we work with the city and make sure that it looks like the others, I don't have a problem with that going on any of our signs. Is there, is there a reason it couldn't?
No, like you and I had this discussion, and I said it was, it would just be, it would take board action.
Yeah.
So do we have a, do we have an estimate on the cost for the sign?
Not at this time.
Okay.
But I can forward that to you. We have to take this to our membership, so it needs to be voted on.
Sure.
And all that. We just need to get the approval first. If needed, we could put it on the post.
No, I think adding it on the sign is, is definitely would be a plus, you know, especially with the example that you, you brought to us there. And maybe it's the start for others to look at doing that as well.
This would be awesome. Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to prove it.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you very much.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Just for clarity, it's option one, right?
Yes, sir. I believe that was your motion for option one with the address, the time, and the date of their meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to thank you for the clarification. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all very much.
Very much.
Okay. Moving on, the number eight would be discussion of short-term rental moratorium, Alderman Bennett. If, if he's prepared to discuss tonight, that's fine. If not, we can table it to the next meeting or the work session on the 10th because he's on the phone.
Can you hear?
That, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah. Well, the issue is, I completely agree with the moratorium. I do have two residents in my ward. One, for example, is a guy, him and his wife bought a house down here and for, with the intentions of moving here with unforeseen circumstances, they can't move here for a year. So they actually bought here versus another city because they were gonna short-term rent their house for a year until they're able to move here. Then I had another guy who's, that lives on Olson that has invested a lot of money into the house next to his. He's with the intentions of filing, and it kind of just called him off guard. But I'm gonna, I'll make the motion to table it until after the work session because maybe, you know, we might figure something out by then. So.
Okay, so I believe he just, just to kind of reiterate what Patrick just said, there, with the fact that we put the short-term rental moratorium on at the last meeting, there were some applications that were out in limbo. But he'd like to table that until after the work session on the 10th to hopefully get it worked out on there. And then we can come back, second meeting of this month, which is.
17th, I believe.
17th, yes, thank you. And make whatever changes we would need to then. You know, kind of, I've felt, fielded a lot of phone calls on this matter where people were upset, but I don't know if any of y'all have gotten them as well. This is just something that I believe the city has, needs to work on some more. I'm kind of hijacking his thing, but, you know, in discussing with the Tourism Commission, we had a meeting with them, Bernie and I did, and a couple other issues. There, there are a lot more out there that we've discovered that are running without correct licensing. So, okay, so that's tabled. Any other discussion? Or we have a motion to table, excuse me.
Chief, did you have something? Oh, I thought you had something. You was waiting.
I have a motion. I just need a second.
Second.
Okay, have a second. Do y'all have any discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. I want to abstain. All right, motion carries. Okay. Moving on. Number nine, grant award, NRCS, Dearman Avenue Ed Magnolia Project. I'm gonna call on Joe here in just a second, but just, oh, and I'm sorry. Anthony. Anthony's here as well. Just to kind of remind everybody, this was the project that we had gotten 2020, and we were working with the property owners down there, and we extended until finally NRCS said they were not gonna extend any further. And now here we are. So, Anthony, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'm Anthony Greer with Pickering Farm. That, that is where the project left off. They got into extension period. There was some COVID downtime in there. I've noticed, I've been going back through all the files, and they just wasn't willing to extend it again. So recently, I actually intercepted an email that came in to Carol Wagner, who was our previous office manager, and it had to do with the project that I was totally unfamiliar with, passed it on to Keeney, and I thought it was a new project. Found out it was, the existing project had previously been Troutman at Magnolia was the, the name of the project. So since that period of time, we've been trying to, to work to find out revised opinion of probable cost was the biggest item that we looked at. Because if you look back at, did everybody get the package that I sent out? The original cost of this project was showing to be estimated at right at $150,000. And that's been from two or three years ago, so we know the cost of the project's gonna go up. We were able to reach out to USDA, and they confirmed that if we received bids on this project, however we bid it, that they will match that low bid to, to take into consideration. So we're not stuck with that one, that one price from years ago. There was also in the original project, the issue of, there's some 72-inch reinforced concrete pipe and asphalt work for underneath some roadway. They had initially said that they would not reimburse that, and I don't know that that's changed, have not heard that that's changed at all. So in y'all's package, I've got an updated OPC with what we would think today's cost would be for the full project as it was designed. When I went back through the documents, I found that there was a set of drawings and a set of specs for this project with a bid form and everything totally completed and, and ready to move into the bid phase if the project would have continued on. And that particular set of documents had this, this full amount of what we call the current project, including pipe replacement. So at that time, it was elected that it would be bid, including the pipe and the asphalt. But that was an option of something you could take out if you were worried about the, the amount that the city would have to pay for. Because if they're not gonna reimburse that, what we're looking at today, and this is, this is an estimate, but, but using real-world numbers, you would be looking at.
That 260 roughly?
So it's $64,154 that would come out of the estimate that's currently 303,169. So it would lower it to $239,014 roughly.
Yeah, that's the old number. Okay, got it. And that's, that's with us having a 25% match on this?
Roughly 25 from what I saw.
Okay. All right.
And Kara had, back then, had further broke it down to where if you wanted to, you did not want to include the pipe and the asphalt work, then the bottom table on the revised cost update where it says only ditch clearing and maintenance, that would be without the pipe and the asphalt in there.
Okay, so, so if we went and we determined that we need to do the, the pipe and the asphalt repair to the road, we're looking at a match of 72-inch. and the asphalt repair to the road, we're looking at a match of 75,792. If we did not, we're looking at 55,000 is, is roughly what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Okay. Joe, I know that in the past, we, we, you know, you worked with this on the deal and, and we had some issues, property issues there.
Yes, sir, right there at Dearman and Magnolia, there's a property that this 72-inch, I think it's actually corrugated metal pipe that was coated and it's failing, close to a property, I actually may have put some pictures in there. They have a shed that's next to it and there's a big sinkhole underneath the shed. So that's, that's the part that I'm, that I'm concerned with, is that area right there. And that's probably the part that they're not gonna match.
Right, but, but you're saying, you're saying, in your, and I, and don't let me put words in your mouth, but, but just so we're saying this out loud, you feel like if this project goes forward, we need to, your opinion is we need to do the piping?
Yes, sir, I'd do that before I do anything.
Okay. So I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that that part of it's clear to the board. And due to the fact, Anthony, this, they kinda held on to this approval. I know we're past the date, but, but they're looking for an answer as soon as possible, right?
Yes, once y'all approve what you wanna do or, or, or not take the funding at all, if you, if you want to take the funding, you have three business days from tonight to get the application and stuff in.
So this was one of the projects that we originally went up to DC back in 2020 and we were funded, uh, through NRCS. I, I still think it's a good project, I think it needs to be done. It helps drainage and that area down, uh, south of the tracks there, and this is part of what, what we've...
That list?
It's on the list, yes. And this is, this is one of those things that, it's important, you know, you don't see a big shiny building after it, but it, it's drainage and, and this is what saves water from being in people's houses. So, um, it's up to the, it's up to the board.
You need a motion to go forward with it?
Yes, sir.
I'll so move.
Thank you.
With the piping.
With the piping, so I have a motion with the piping, is that your second? Thank you, sir. All right, uh, and then, I mean, so the discussion part of it would be, we're still gonna have to come back and further discuss this project, but right now, we're just accepting the grant part. Is that, is that the clear? Okay, I just wanna make sure we're all clear and on the same page with that. So, um, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anthony, thank you, sir.
I do have a question, Anthony. Are there, this, are there any others out there? Keeney, are you aware of, are there any other projects from 2021, 2020? Any other ones that y'all have discovered or are you're maybe not aware of, but you're gonna look now and see if there's any other projects out there?
I'm, I'm not aware of any, but I can reach back and see.
I, I think this is the only one that we were approved for and then they, after, because we were having issues with the property owners getting access to it, that's why we lost, lost the grant at the time.
Still would look.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying not to, so.
And also too, I, I wanted to point out, it's, it's not in here, but also associated with this is your, your CE&amp;I, your, your construction engineering and inspection is seven and a half percent of whatever the construction project comes in at. And also before, there was a, a, a fee set up for the bidding portion of the project. Well, it never made it to bid, so that was never spent, I think it was around $3,000.
Okay.
And, and the way, the way I read what's in the files, that would come, whatever amount you get to go toward construction, that comes off. So it eats into that construction budget.
Sure, so, so I guess, let's do this, then. With the approval tonight, we'll come back with, cause we're gonna have more steps, right? Am I, what's the next step? With the approval tonight, what's our next step?
I guess when it goes back and I'm, I'm sure there'll be some kind of contractual agreement that'll then come from USDA.
They'll send an MOU, I think.
To the city and all, and then from there, I would anticipate it would go into, going ahead, moving forward. We'll have to go back and, and, cause we'll have new engineers, we'll go back and look at the design, make sure there's no other stuff. I wanna get with Joe to see if we can find some cost-saving measures.
Okay.
Look a little bit harder and, you know, think out of the box, see if we can save a little bit of money there. But eventually get it to, to bid in construction.
Okay, so I think what we need to do is approve the acceptance of the bid tonight. Then when we get the MOU, you come back with us, let's approve all of it at that time. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Acceptance of the grant tonight.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're, we're all on the same page. We good with that?
Yes.
Sounds great.
All right, all right, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
All right, I got the next one on the agenda.
You got the next one. Change order, uh, bottom to top construction, Mount Bass Drainage.
Summary change order, everything's done.
Okay, this was the one that we, this is just the formal paperwork of what we did the last time, correct?
What we did last time was approved a work change directive to be included on the summary change order. So what you have in this summary change order is, is every quantity that went into the project, the bottom line and the overall co, cost. We, last time we looked at it, we were thinking it was gonna come in right around 704,000 and some change. Well, there was some quantities out there that hadn't been calculated yet, so I think it was an extra 4,000 over that, 708,000 and some change. But work's totally done, looks great.
I have gotten phone calls, uh, from neighbors around there, you know, saying, thanking us for having it done. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Just to let y'all know, we'll have one more final payout on that for just retainage only. It'll be at the next meeting and it'll just be a matter of, of, they're, they're still have a couple of closeout documents. I've got most of them, but wanna make sure I've got everything. So when I get those closeout documents to Keeney and give Joe copies of the ass belts and everything, then they'll, that will just be a release of their retainage, is all it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, uh, and then we added 11, uh, the update on Coal Motors. That would be Patrick, Angie, if you'll hold him to the microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I got a call from the owners and they are just, I guess, confused about where we're, where they're at in the process. And I couldn't really remember from the last meeting. I know they were waiting on, uh, some kind of paperwork. I don't know if that was supposed to be from, uh, from our lawyer or the property owner's lawyer. And I guess they're, they're a little confused about it too. If you remember, they came a couple months ago to the meeting and spoke.
And vacating the ditch, correct? Or the property that included the ditch?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
I, I can give you an update if, if the board would like. The original request was made by counsel for, uh, those folks with Coal Motors, Ms. Elliott, Michelle Lubera Elliott. There were other counsel, David Buckoff, on behalf of the property owner to the north of the, the city's right-of-way. And also Mr. Buddy Ray to the west of Coal Motors owns the car wash. The city's easement runs from East Second Street to the west behind those two businesses, the car wash and Coal Motors, and to the south of the apartments, it's in between them. Um, I discussed with Joe many months ago, when they made their request for the city to vacate their right-of-way, he explained to me that the city needed that right-of-way for the purposes of cleaning that ditch. That that entrance from East Second Street to the west, all the way behind Buddy's Ray's, was the way, in addition to using Buddy Ray's property, was the, the mechanism that the city used to get in and out of there and keep the ditch clean. Through negotiations over a period of time, and when we last appeared before the board, I represented that we had reached an agreed order that Joe and I also talked about that would, uh, vacate the easement in favor of those three property owners, and I understand they were dividing it equally between the three of them, with the city maintaining, um, a, a right to enter the property for the purposes of cleaning the ditch. There was, I think we, Joe, we agreed on about a 15-foot easement.
Yes, sir.
For the purposes of us getting in, and the deed that Ms. Elliott prepared for that purpose was prepared by me and executed by me, delivered to her, at which time Mr. Buddy Ray declined to enter into the agreement at that time. So the agreement was not executed, we do not have a resolution of it, and Ms. Elliott has requested a court hearing on the matter. I presume she's going to attempt to require the court to, to force the city to vacate the property, which will oppose that without an agreement. It does no good for us to get an easement for the first half of the property and not be able to get on behind Mr. Ray's property to clean the last half of the ditch. And that's, that's essentially what position he would put us in by refusing to agree. If he changes his mind and agrees, we have an agreed order ready to go. If he doesn't, I suspect the, the chancellor court will deny their request. And the city's opposition, I filed an answer opposing the vacation of the, of the city's easement for that reason. It's a, it's a matter of public works and, and cleaning ditches, so that's where we stand. Mr. Ray killed the deal when he declined to enter into an agreement, giving the city its easement to clean behind the ditch on, that's behind his property. Now, in the past, as I understand from Joe, he's allowed us to even come onto his property to get access to the ditch. That could change, obviously. And if we give up our right to, to ingress and egress to the ditch from Second Street and he changes his mind, we can't get to the ditch anymore. So for that reason, he either has to agree or, or we can't enter into the order. So that's the, that's the status of it.
Okay, all right, so.
But, but to answer Mr. Bennett's question, his client or the people he talked with are telling him correctly. There was an agreement reached, uh, and then it fell apart based on the property owner.
The property owner to the west.
Yeah, I, I thought.
Gotcha.
To the west.
I can remember this way back when it first occurred and we did all that, had the paperwork and it was all ready to go, and I thought, I thought it was going to be done. Didn't know it wasn't.
And we were all under the impression that it's...
The city executed the agreed-upon deed which, which vacated and transferred, divided it to those people and retained our easement for the purposes of cleaning it. And when Ms. Elliott attempted to circulate it among the parties, Mr. Buddy would not execute it.
Yeah.
Therefore, the instrument was not filed.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, so I'm the other property owner, okay? And, um, you have to go through our property, not through the road to get to the ditch. Do you understand where the property is located?
Yes, ma'am, I'm looking at it here on...
The middle of our property, okay? We have quite a bit of property behind our business.
Mm-hmm.
But the ditch stops us from developing any of it. Okay? No one maintains our ditch, and if you'll ride by there today, it is spotless. The city might come in once every two to three years and cut it, they don't even need to cut it. It's clean and, as a matter of fact, they keep digging the dirt out and making the, the ditch so deep that there's water held in the ditch. There's rodents in there, the other day, there were beavers in there. Y'all talking about property owners and health concerns? That's where I would be worried. There's snakes in there, large snakes. We're right in the middle of apartment complexes and children walking through the lot to get up to the front. And, um, we keep ours clean. Buddy Ray does not clean his property, he does not clean his ditch. You have to go across our property with your equipment to get to it. They don't even need to come on our property, it's clean. We have not denied an easement, we will leave an open gate if we put a gate up for the city to come in. I have all agreement of that. There will not be a court date. I, I'm willing to develop that property, bring in more taxes for the city, but if that's what's holding it up, I did not agree to a court date. I was not even...
The Elliott requested the court date, not the city.
No one, I did not agree to a court date.
Is she your lawyer, ma'am?
If I walk out of here today and...
She your lawyer, ma'am?
She is my lawyer, I can't get in touch with her, she's been on maternity.
She's out on maternity, I know, but I, I got a notice from the court saying she'd requested some dates, so.
Now, this has been going on for a year.
I know, and I've...
I mean, I have not heard, I tried to get in touch with you for quite a while, couldn't get it myself personally.
I know, but when you have a lawyer, I kinda have to deal with your lawyer and not you. I apologize for that, but...
Well, originally, I didn't have a lawyer.
I can't talk to representing clients generally.
But, and, and I was advised, I don't even, I didn't know her before then. But anyway, now we're back to square one, we own the property, we have a large ditch, we have a large piece of property behind it, we maintain the ditch. The city comes in, they dig out the ditch, it's deep. The water cannot jump up and get into your pipe. Somebody needs to go in there and fill it in and do it properly. Or we'd be willing to cover it, I don't know what it'll take. We looked at one, we looked into it one time and didn't get a lot of answers on that. But it's been a year and I wish somebody would give me a final answer. I mean, it, it's ridiculous that you can't talk to anybody up at the courthouse for anything. Can't get ahold of attorneys, can't get ahold of anybody. So, let me know what I need to do. Or do we need to drop it and let it be an open fee?
Well, you know, if there's, what I'm hearing, and, and again, let me, let me preface this with I'm not an attorney and, and Mr. Simpson can stop me at any point in time. It, it seems that this whole deal is held up by your neighbor to the west.
My neighbor, I can't do anything about that.
I understand that.
If the man does not wanna do that, I am not forcing him to do that.
But understand where we're coming from as a city too, and, and there's no doubt. I've driven by your property, I know it's clean and you do a very good job and we appreciate that. The problem of it is, is by, uh, blocking that, we have no way of getting to behind the two properties to your west. And that's the, that is our major issue, is that, is that correct? So.
It's a city, it's a city property right now and Public Works tells me they utilize that property to get in there and clean that ditch periodically.
They can't get to us through that road. They can't get to their ditch through our, through that road. You see what I'm saying? They have to come across our property, they have to go down that road and cross our property to get to your city ditch. Yeah.
Is that, that eat, that right-of-way is north of that ditch, isn't it?
So off of, from Second Street going west?
I guess we're really cleaning that ditch at a, a right of servitude, would you say?
You don't have an easement on my property.
Well, as, as you suggested, many, many months ago, the city agreed to do exactly what you've asked to do. I signed the document, handed it to, to your counsel, who later on attempted to circulated it, circulated, at which time it met resistance. So the city agreed to do what you've been asking for months for us to do. Just the other, one of the other two, three parties would not. And so it wasn't, wasn't, it's not us who's holding it up.
So that's where we are, so it's just, that's it, nothing else to do.
Well, I believe, I believe what I'm hearing also is, and I know you're having trouble, but it, it holds in your, the hands of your attorney right now.
Well, what's gonna change? Cause you do cross our property right now to come to the ditch.
I, that I...
What if I say, don't cross my property? To the city.
We, we have a, we have a, the right, the right-of-way there along that ditch.
Where is your right-of-way?
I don't have a...
The right-of-way is north of there, we want, we have a right of servitude to come down that ditch, which has been there for years and years, hundreds of years. That's, we, we use the right of servitude to go down that ditch. We were gonna exchange that right-of-way for the right of servitude to come down that, that ditch to get a, a written easement down that ditch, is what we did a trade-off for. Does that make sense, counsel, you may be able to explain that a little more?
It does, it's all in the document.
So we were trying to do a trade-off.
I can't give her legal advice, but she has a lawyer who has...
Well, you know, we could park a bunch of junk cars back there, fence it in and make it a junkyard.
I don't think so.
You could do that and you'd be back here in front of the city, that's really not what you want, but...
We were wanting to develop the property.
Well, ma'am, so unfortunately, you know, what I'm hearing, because the city's willing to do this, but what we're running into is two factors. The neighbor's not wanting to sign it and then the fact that your counsel, we don't, we don't have anything back from her. Or, you know, we're having, we're...
We, we, we do, to a clarification, she has, because she could not get the cooperation of the third party, she set it for, or she at least requested dates from the court to have a hearing. And...
So that's what...
Out in agreement, I have to show up at that hearing and oppose that on behalf of the city. I can't give away two-thirds of something and not have access to the other third, that, that's our problem.
Well, the day I filed the petition, I went into, into the planning commission and I told them what I wanted to do. They said, well, you have to file a lawsuit against the city to get them to do this. I said, I've never filed a lawsuit in my life.
And, and that's what was originally done, a petition to vacate the...
I had to get an attorney to do this, like a three-ring circus. Now I've got an attorney that won't do anything, can't, can't communicate with whoever. So, that's where we are. So that's okay, y'all can drop it. So that's okay, y'all can drop it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
All right, um, moving on, uh, let's see, uh, under department business, uh, under mayor's title, uh, just a couple of things, kind of some housekeeping things. Uh, we are, we are meeting, I, I spoke earlier. We met with the tourism commission, we've gotten some information. Uh, the city of Pascrestian has shared some notes with us regarding their VRBO ordinance. So there, there is some more information that we'll be able to bring and share to the board. Um, that we'll be able to share, uh, with the board on the, uh, 10th for that meeting. So that's more of a, just an FYI. Um, I have something to bring in front of the board. I was contacted, the mayor and I were contacted, and he was not able to meet, make the meeting uh, by Ms. Sarah Geis from the Land Trust for the Mississippi Coastal Plain. Um, they are, they are conservators of over 10,000 acres of land, wetlands, they do wetlands mitigations, um, things like that, so, uh, and then they also have grant programs. Uh, if it's the pleasure of the board, um, we can have them come in front of us and, and talk about possibility of, when we have a developer that has, uh, wetland property, instead of mitigating it, or other options with that. And that, I'm gonna kind of put it up to the board, if you guys would like Ms. Geis to come and speak. Um, also, they have grants for nature trails that I, I mentioned to Bob Paul about, because we were working on south of the ball fields there at one point in time, a grant for a nature trail. We've been declined for it in the past because we don't have a way of getting over, is that canal one or two, three? I, I'm not sure, whatever the canal is south of there. Um, so anyways, I just, I bring that up, if you guys would like to hear from them, uh, I can set them up on the, uh, next, uh, board meeting and kind of go from there.
Sounds good to me, at least we can, uh.
It's just an option, it's nothing that the city does directly.
Right.
Um, but it, it's, it's another option.
It's a sa- a cost savings.
For the developer.
Yes.
For the developer, yes, and tax incentives from federal, not city, so, okay.
The learning, learning, um, experience also.
Okay, so I'll, uh, I'll reach out to that and try to work it out. Um, and I believe that's all I have, so, all right. So moving on from there, um, let's see, da, 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 personnel. Um, under personnel, civil service step chart effective 10-123. Um, looking for a motion in a second.
No move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? What did I miss there?
No, I, I left a number out there.
Uh, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, and then under the, the next step increase, I have, uh, fire department, uh, eight step increase, uh, two promotions. Jim, uh, I'm gonna take them all under once, sorry, uh, Mr. Parker. Under general admin, uh, two step increases, senior citizens, uh, two step increases, recreations, uh, step increases, and under the mayor's office, uh, we have one that is not under civil service, and we have a, a salary increase, which is, uh, taking the place of a step increase. Okay, that was a mouthful, so I have a motion?
Yep.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, city clerk, municipal compliance questionnaire, FY 2023.
Motion?
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Purchased cemetery plots from, uh, Mr. Chuck Beaver.
Motion?
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, under item C, budget amendment, FY 2024, uh, police department. Motion or discussion?
Motion with discussion.
I have a motion, looking for a second.
Second.
Second and discussion.
Was this a part of the? So these were items that they have already put, uh, purchase orders for out of their 23 budget? The items weren't received before the end of the budget? So we're just rolling them forward? They're encumbered but unexpended from last year's budget.
Sounds good.
Does that answer your question?
I read all of that.
Okay.
I'm just, I was just wondering, um, so this isn't gonna push us over, or just, we're just rolling it forward?
We're rolling what was budgeted last year, unspent, into this, so, so when it does come in, it will be spent. Good, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fire department, sir.
Anything?
You're good to go, thank you. Police department, emergency vehicle request. These are purchases for.
And I can do both of these, those things together.
And financing?
We spoke during the budget process, are we gonna finance the vehicles? We have found vehicles, uh, there's no state contract for them. And because of, uh, the worker shortage and all that, and we want to go ahead and purchase them, but we had to figure out the financing after I spoke with Keeney before I cut the purchase order, so.
So this, so the reason we were doing this is because of the state bids. What was it, two years ago, we were still waiting, a, a year and a half later, after ordering the vehicles?
They're not, and they're actually, any of the 2024s that are being made are going to unfulfilled orders from 23. So you're not gonna be able to get a.
You're not gonna be able to get it.
We're able to find 23 is still on the lot in our color.
This is not what we just approved?
No, no, the budget amendment, that was items, a window that, that's broken to police station. Uh, I don't remember, a kennel, stuff that we had ordered last year that still has not come in. Uh, some of them's 10, 14 weeks old, uh, some of its equipment installed that was budgeted last year. We cut the purchase order, ordered it, and the, we hadn't got the items yet. So we had, weren't able to pay for it in last budget, so we're taking that money that was in last budget.
Okay.
Because it was budgeted for last year and just rolling that forward.
So the, the two vehicles, I thought we had discussed one.
We ended up doing two in the budget. Two for the police department, and then one for Bob Paul's, uh, department.
I remember Bob Paul's department.
We do financing, it'd be better package to do all three together.
And, and as far as financing wise, you'll get a.
The financing was much better.
Yes. Okay, so do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, sir. Anything else? I did want to add, uh, I did speak with assistant chief, I didn't, uh, get you today, but, you know, not only was, was the parade a great success, there was no major incidents or anything like that, too, so, which is, is another positive, so thank all the departments. I mean, you know, here, we had stuff down in the harbor, we had it all the way up Jeff Davis, down railroad and all. So thank everybody for the hard work that they put in.
Biggest crowd we've had several, several years.
Think it has something to do with a little bit of good weather, too.
Columbus Day, I, you know, everything.
Yep.
School being out all week.
Yep, so, perfect, thank you. Engineering, uh, I don't see a representative, we're gonna move on from that. Uh, public works, uh, annual, uh, award annual bids. Um, you have in front of you there, so just looking for a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, building office, Mr. Gunlock.
We're good.
We're good, um, oh, sorry, Bob, I, I have that tendency.
Um, we have a new event, um, on Thursday, trucks and tacos at the Town Green. Um, see how it works out, maybe they'll continue this next year.
Yep.
Also, Long Beach Live on Friday night at the Town Green.
Yes, so Thursday, uh, we have a cruise-in for the square-body trucks, uh, through cruising with, not directly affiliated, but during cruising week, I want to be clear about that. Uh, and then, so they'll be there Thursday and Friday. And then Friday night, we have the Barstool Cowboys, uh, presented by Long Beach Live and their sponsors. Uh, want to take the opportunity of thanking every one of those sponsors that does support this, because they're the ones that make it happen, so. That, that's, that's a big deal, they're, uh, Long Beach Live's been around since 2009, so it's a great event, so. Thank you, Bob, for what your staff does there.
Uh, Bob, what time was that, uh, thing on the Town Green, the taco deal or?
10 o'clock in the morning, till 10.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it starts in the morning, 10 o'clock in the morning, till 10 o'clock at night.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Emma with the courts.
We're good.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
All right, Harry, you good with the harbor?
Uh, we're good.
Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Courtney?
I'm good.
You're good, thank you, ma'am. Darilic Properties, I'm not showing any. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, you have any updates for us, sir?
Uh, at the commencement of the meeting, I presented the city clerk two small, uh, checks from Medier and Reeves as partial payments on some of the opioid litigation, but that's been given to her.
We making sure what she does with that?
Or that's up to.
She's still tracking it, believe me, it goes through.
I saw him perk up. Okay, and do we, uh, are we still working on leases? Do we have any updates on that, or is that?
We do not have any further update on that.
Perfect, perfect, just making sure that we're, we're there. All right, um. Okay, well. Last thing is, uh, your favorite thing, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn this meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second. This, uh, all in favor? This, this meeting is.
And hold you just a little bit longer.